Everybody, let's call the meeting to order. Time.
Adequate notice of six PM. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, Senator Byron M. Baer Open Publics Meeting Act.
At this time, we would like to have a silent moment. And Carol Russo, would you please do the last salute? It's Victoria, I'm sorry.
The Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
If you're online, could you please mute your phones, please, and or computers? We can hear you online. Much appreciated, please. Okay. Miss Copsby, can you please call roll?
Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Commissioner Musso.
Here.
Commissioner Capazola.
Here.
Commissioner Saleo.
Here.
Commissioner Loes.
Here.
Deputy Director Romero and Director Albert are excused.
Okay. Can we first call up to the public, see?
Can we have a motion?
Oh, yeah, as you say, it's a motion.
Motion and second.
Hmm, a motion and second.
Make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
A second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the public comment. Everybody have anything to comment on at this point in time? Let's go to first to the agenda. No money, no takers? I don't bite, guys.
Make a motion, second.
Salute. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's move on, Mark.
Resolution 2023-473, resolution authorizing payment of bills. Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso, do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second.
Oh, Boyste.
All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yeah.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
All right, let's move on to review the gen lines.
Resolution 14367, resolution memorializing and ratifying first step clinic food schedule. Resolution number 14378, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for custom-built M-Tech composite mats with steel edge for mosquito division. Resolution number 14379, resolution approving change order number one to contract for providing vaccination services for the Cumberland County Department of Health, RFP 22-76. Resolution number 14380, resolution exercising option to renew contract for providing and delivering washed aggregate for the Cumberland County Public Works Department bid number 22-30. Resolution number 14381, resolution correcting resolution 2023-455, awarding a contract for supplying and delivering paper goods and missile ladies janitorial items to Cumberland County, bid number 23-17, resubmission. Resolution number 14382, resolution correcting resolution 2023-460, authorizing participation in the New Jersey State approved cooperative contract number ESCNJ 20-21-45, for the provision of internet services for various county locations for the Cumberland County IT Department. Resolution 14383, resolution exercising second and final option to renew contract for intermittent services at the Cumberland County Veteran Cemetery, RFP 21-19. Resolution number 14384, resolution exercising first option to renew contract for supplying and laying hot mixed asphalt for the Cumberland County Public Works Department and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier number 181CCCCPS, bid number 22-32. Resolution number 14385, resolution exercising one, first option to renew the contract for supplying and delivering VOC compliant high-performance cold patch for the Cumberland County Public Works Department and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier number 181CCCCPS, bid number 22-31. Resolution number 14386, resolution exercising second and final option to renew contract for providing collision repair and vehicle painting services for the County of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier number 181CCCCPS, bid number 21-22. Resolution number 14387, resolution approving change order number one to contract for providing various social services for the homeless for the County of Cumberland, County Department of Human Services, RFP number 22-63. Resolution number 143839, resolution approving change order number one to contract for providing drug and alcohol treatment services for the Cumberland County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Services Office, RFP number 22-59. Resolution number 14391, resolution approving change order number one to contract for providing drug and alcohol treatment services for the Cumberland County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Services Office, RFP number 22-59. Resolution number 14392, resolution authorizing the County Agriculture Development Board to review, manage, approve, and/or deny applications regarding special occasion events on preserved farms in accordance with Public Law 2023C.9. Resolution number 14393, resolution authorizing grant agreement reconciliation addendum for FY 2020-2021 Local Efficiency Achievement Program Fellowship Grant. Resolution number 14394, resolution authorizing purchase from New Jersey State contract vendor for data extraction, copy database backup, install on available system at QED Data Center for the Cumberland County 9/11 Emergency Communications. Resolution 14395, resolution canceling expired contracts for July 2023 covering materials, services, and supplies. Resolution number 14396, resolution authorizing purchases from state contract vendors. Resolution number 14397, resolution approving change order number one to contract for replacement of bridge number 0600-30030, Mayor Aiken Drive over Sunset Lake Raceway, City of Bridgeton, Cumberland County, New Jersey, bid number 21-51. Resolution number 14398, resolution approving change order number to contract, this one should have been full for. Resolution number 14399, resolution approving change order number one to contract for specifications for the 2021 rape program, City of Byman, Cumberland County, New Jersey, bid number 22-02. Resolution number 14400, resolution authorizing grant agreement reconciliation addendum for FY 2022-2023 Local Efficiency Achievement Program Fellowship Grant. Resolution number 14401, resolution authorizing the purchase of a 22-foot Homesteader trailer, bid number 5HABC22295NO48914, from the Cumberland County Board of Health for the sum of $1. Resolution number 14402, resolution authorizing the County of Cumberland's renewal of membership in the New Jersey County's Joint Insurance Fund. Resolution number 14403, resolution authorizing acceptance and execution of a grant agreement for the FY 21 ARC Automated License Plate Reader Initiative for the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office. Resolution number 14404, resolution approving budget amendment FY 21 ARC Automated License Plate Reader Initiative for $402,039. Resolution number 14405, resolution requesting permission for the dedication by Ryder for First Step Clinic donations trust fund as required by NJSA 40A:5-29. Resolution 14406, resolution approving budget amendment State Health Insurance Program Grant, $35,000. Resolution number 14407, resolution approving budget amendment Community Peer Recovery Center, $1,033. Resolution number 14408, resolution amending resolution 2022-695 in order to accept additional funding of $1,033 for the Community Peer Recovery Center Grant Program. Resolution number 14409, resolution authorizing application and continuation of the shared service agreement with the City of Byman, the City of Millville, and the City of Bridgeton for the FY 2023 Edwin Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program. Resolution 14410, resolution approving budget amendment, the Police Youth Initiative Grant Program, $60,000. Resolution number 14411, resolution memorializing and ratifying acceptance and execution of a grant agreement for the Police Youth Initiative Grant Program for the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office. Resolution number 14412, resolution amending resolution 2021-2020-211 in order to accept a grant extension of one additional year for the FY 2020 Strategies to Support Children Exposed to Violence Grant Program. Resolution number 14414, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in a litigation matter in accordance with NJAC 5:30-5.3 through NJAC 5:30-5.5. Resolution number 14415, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in a litigation matter in accordance with NJAC 5:30-5.3 through NJAC 5:30-5.5. Resolution 14416, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in a litigation matter in accordance with NJAC 5:30-5.3 through NJAC 5:30-5.5. Resolution number 14417, resolution authorizing grant application to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for Recreational Opportunities for Individuals with Disabilities Grant. Resolution 14418, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in accordance with NJAC 5:30-5.3 through NJAC 5:30-5.5 for workers' compensation matter of Amanda Wilmore versus County of Cumberland. Resolution number 14420, resolution ratifying adoption of updated rules and regulations for the Cumberland County Veteran Cemetery. Resolution number 14422, resolution amending resolution 2022-434, a resolution authorizing a shared service agreement between Cumberland County Office on Aging and Disabled and Allen M. Voorhees Transportation Center, Edward J. Golski's School of Planning and Public Policy, Rutgers, the State University of New Jersey for CATS Future of Mobility Study. Resolution number 14423, resolution for the establishment of a local emergency planning committee. Resolution number 14424, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for providing medication-assisted treatment services for the Cumberland County Department of Corrections.
Did I have a motion consent on resolutions?
June, are we going to keep all them on or are you going to pull any off?
The only one where I pulled was twenty, I believe.
Twenty, right, is that it?
But that was your point then, because of this.
That was the resolution number 2143.
Yes, I don't know if pulling, I just had a question. With the license plate readers, prosecutor, how does that work here? I know what they're doing, likes and regards they work with, et cetera and so forth. It will be shared with the towns here, exactly how it would work here in this county?
Yes. So, we were receiving a grant for $402,000. It was a grant, an application we made on behalf of Byman, Bridgeton, Millville, and the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office, including ourselves. The majority of the ALPRs that we're going to be able to buy are going to be stationary, so they'll be fixed as places, which we won't disclose to the public. But there are a few mobile ALPRs, and then I think they call it a rapid deployment, which would be like one we have, and we can put out somewhere if there was a murder or something of that nature.
Okay, that answered, you don't have to go into any more jail.
But I do want to just mention that the state police also received some of the awards, so they will be covering the township areas.
Are these also mobile?
Excuse me?
Are they mobile vehicles as well?
The most, the overwhelming majority, the ones we're getting now are going to be fixed, but there will be a few mobile and one or two rapid deployment.
Thank you.
And I'm proud to say we were the second highest award in the state.
Very good. And I have one more quick question for, I believe, Neil or whoever's in Public Works, 399, there was a question regarding the temporary modification on brochure, and I just kind of wondered what that temporary modification would be.
14399.
14399. And if contract specifications were 2021 rape program.
Is Neil Riley here? Neil, you on the phone?
Okay, that's okay.
Go ahead and clarify.
I can, I can just get that thing, just that's the only thing we're working on.
You don't want that pulled, you're just going to let it go.
Oh, no, no, just want to know what the modification is.
Well, as you can see, this part of that is probably pulged still, that's why we just got information today. All right, very good.
Do I have a motion and second, if there's some public comments?
Second.
Boyste?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anybody want to speak to the public, please come up. Anybody?
Boyste?
Wait, I think we have some more. Mr. Hawke? It wouldn't be a meeting without you coming up, Mr. Hawke. You don't disappoint me, huh?
Need my cover due. 14401, that's a 22-foot trailer.
That's from the Board of Health?
From the Board of Health.
Right, right, it's being sold for $1.
To who?
To the County Board, for our own use.
What are we using it for, we don't know.
Previously, it was used during COVID. It was used as a trailer for COVID, for the Board of Health. For vaccinations and so on.
So we're buying it just in anticipation that maybe we'll need something like that?
Possibly.
And it's a very good price.
And it's in decent, it's in decent condition.
Okay.
For a dollar, I'd take the news.
14359. Resolution awarding fair and open professional service contract to conduct preliminary assessment for Park. Joseph, where did that Joseph go?
These are on for next. These are the ones that aren't.
Are the ones.
Okay, you're on, you're on the list.
Resolution awarding fair and open professional service contract. Conduct the preliminary assessment for the Mid-City Park.
Is that it?
Yeah.
1459.
Where's it going to be?
Yeah.
Proposals aren't back yet for June.
Right, actually, two things, one, those are back, and Matt, I know, has the answer for that.
They have a complaint.
So, this would be for the trail system, for the two parcels that the county owns on the west side of Marais Avenue, across from Fairgrounds.
Okay. Can it be used for anything else, it's just sort of Fairgrounds, something?
It's specifically trail development funds.
Who could use this, huh?
It's either horse trail, and we're just for walking trails. Yes, it's part of the, still part of the Fairground territory.
Okay. By the way, just to let you know, I, we went to the fair, and the demolition derby was eventful.
And my two grandsons were there, too, they said it was great. My two grandsons were there, three and six years old. And they said it was wonderful. They had a great time. Actually, anybody else go to the fair? How did you all like it this year?
Like me?
Yes, you also.
Oh, I enjoyed it, you know, I, watching my family who was there with a 16-year-old grandson, he hadn't seen anything like that, he'd just been ready to drive.
That's great, that's what we do, that's what we're trying to achieve.
Couldn't take it off either, driving backwards all the time.
It was bigger and better than it was last year, and I'm really, I'm just really proud that we did it. And a lot of accolades go to Matt and all the crew at Works, Sheriff's Department, so good for him.
Thank you. Make sure you can take your son on the trails instead of the.
Anybody else? No takers? Okay. A motion to close, please?
Salute.
Second. All in favor?
We do have a next amendment.
We do have one? Okay, let me.
Resolution number 2023-474, resolution providing for immediately not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Senator Byron M. Baer Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-2. Matters involving individual privacy, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege, matters relating to the employment relationship. Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso. Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Loz.
Yes.
Enter. And it is not anticipated to be any action after.
Thank you. Um, we're going to move into the other room, I assume?
Aye.
Okay, so you guys are welcome to stay. Exactly, see what we can. Motion?
Boystow?
Aye.
All in favor?
626.